Good evening and welcome to the City of Iscany City Council Meeting for Wednesday, February 2nd. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all city council members are present minus Councilman Collison. He notified that he would not be here this evening. We do have agenda modification, Ms. Wood. You said we were adding something in the consent agenda.
Do you want to, Mayor, ask for a public comment prior?
Oh yeah, I suppose that does go first, doesn't it? Is there a public comment? If there is, as you have to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and feel free to talk. Nobody at this time. Moving on to the agenda now, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. We do have in addition to consent, this will be L seven, approving the hire of liquor store clerk two for Roberta Clatt.
Do have a motion to adopt the agenda with the adding of L seven.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Approval of city council minutes for January eighteenth, which was a regular meeting of city council, January eighteenth, a committee of a whole meeting, and January twenty-fourth, goal setting. Excuse me.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Announcements, committee of a whole will be Tuesday, February fifteenth, at five P M. City council meeting will also be Tuesday, February fifteenth, at seven P M., with a planning commission meeting immediately following that council meeting. Any council committee reports?
Fire District, Matt, they finally got their towel holes that they ordered a year and a half ago. They, one was done with the graphics and was going in for, I believe, being equipped out, and the other one was in gaining its graphics at that time. They do have two rangers ordered also to replace their duty cars, but, you know, they're, again, they're going to be up in air if they can get them replaced or not. As far as the joint powers agreement, that has basically been tabled at this time until we do have some progress on certain entities drafting up, allowing each entity to allow the fire district to bill on their behalf.
All right. That explains why the red towel's sitting out back all the time now.
I think that one, are they going to sell that one, or?
I believe they will be.
The thing at four-wheel drive?
That one doesn't, the new one does. So, the new one is very, very nice.
Maybe I wanted a towel for a second there.
They are, they are looking at replacing some of the hearse equipment, but some of the consensus was, you know, just buy it, but, you know, when you're spending X amount of dollars and trying to stay within a budget, it's kind of hard, so if some other money comes up, they, they may move forward with that, but.
Any other council committee reports?
Jimmy, did you go to that bike and walk trail meeting?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, there's not much to report. I mean, it's pretty, pretty standard maintenance kind of stuff, and, I don't know, nothing really.
We do our part, they do theirs.
What'd you say?
I said, "We do our part, they do theirs."
Yeah, yeah, they actually had a property owner who's got quite a bit of stretch, I guess, along the trail, and she had done some work because they had, I think it was Emerald Ashboards or something like that, or it was, I don't, I don't remember if that was the reason why or not. It was some reason that she had to get rid of some trees and clear it out, and it ended up turning out pretty nice. I know she was worried about it, and, you know, but it turned, turned out just fine, so.
It's unbelievable, the amount of people that use that thing.
Is it?
It's crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, I would, I, I'm lucky I could walk from here to the start of it, but, um, those people, I mean, they walk from Iscany to Cambridge, they bike it. I know Ms. Wood and I sat through one year, what, a couple of years ago, and there was some discussion about, you know, standing on the boards, and a lot of that is problems is it's over wetland, and, you know, it isn't just dealing with county issues, and then all of a sudden you're dealing with D N R.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and I think they're gradually getting that bridge boards replaced, and they're doing like one at a time, and so, I mean, it's, they're not closing the trail to do that project, but they're just getting to it as they have time to do it, so.
Ms. Wood, I did want to ask, do we have something on February twenty-second for, I'll get to it, I'm looking.
Park Rec and Culture Board.
Is that what it is with the, um, Minnesota Department of Health?
Oh, um...
She reached out to me today, so I was just curious.
I saw that email come in, and I, I wasn't sure what that was all about, so.
I sent my email.
I'm not sure about any emails from Department of Health or meeting.
There was...
Oh, uh, do we have the MS four audit that?
February fifteenth.
I'm not sure what that would be.
She said she was coming to the February twenty-second meeting.
Well, the only meeting we have that evening is the Park Rec and Culture Board meeting. Please forward me the email.
Yeah, it was a contact form from the city website.
I thought it might have been junk mail.
Did you get that one, too?
Yeah, but I didn't do anything with it, I thought it might have been a...
Just asking for an email address, as I sent it.
Yeah, well, I suppose like, well, yeah, your direct email address they wanted, yeah. I don't know, I didn't, that, if it was like, well, this doesn't really make any sense, so.
I've gotten a lot of spam things through that.
Lots of them.
People just jump on there and, "You know, it'd be funny if we email them."
I know there was talk at some point, they were talking about doing something about that white wa- uh, walk, bike trail extending and trying to go towards North Branch, was that something, can't remember if you, you and Ms. Wood and I were at that meeting, or Mike mentioned that to me at some point?
I believe in the county, um, park, county park master plan project, they have discussed wanting to extend to hit the Sunrise Trail in North Branch, so then it can hit the trail that goes all the way up to Duluth, I believe, I'm not sure if there's any segments missing, but, um, I haven't heard any progress, but yet I haven't attended those, their meetings.
There's a plan, but they're not enough on to do it, so I definitely reached out to all the cities and stuff around, to try and get money to do it, but that was a year ago, but it's been a while.
So...
The master plan eventually...
Also, um, Schubert and Hoy Outdoor Advertising, um, Leora from P and M Trust reached out to me, gave me the contact for that billboard.
Fantastic.
Which I called.
Great.
Then I talked to him, and he said that he would, that board allegedly is bought by, oh, he's not here, I don't know why, I would think Keith would be here right now, um, that board was allegedly bought by somebody six months ago, but they have done nothing with it.
Which is why it's setting black?
So, he said, you know, I mean, I kind of made the point, and Mike, Mr. Becker can kick me later, but I said, you know, if the city ended up on that billboard, you could pretty much guarantee you're always going to have a tenant on that board. And he, let me see what kind of pushing I can do, and can I get your number to call you back?
So, did they, did they say that a company that just sells the billboard is who bought it?
No, they're...
Or leases it out?
How they put it is, they're the advertising company, but we would purchase that billboard. So, we're, they don't really call us a tenant of that billboard, we are purchasing that billboard. So, somebody had purchased that billboard, but they have done nothing with it, he asked for a graphic design, they've given him nothing, it's just been black.
The way I understand it, those, the way I understand it, that those companies own those things, and you purchase it, or lease it, basically. Lease it for, I think it's a minimum, when the fire district, when the fire department, I'm not going to say district, because at that time it was the fire department, the fire department was advertising them on rodeo, they had, they had to lease it for three months, that's why it was up there for so long after the rodeo.
And the way this guy, is that's how it is, but that's not how they put it, so we would, we are leasing the billboard, but he calls it purchasing the billboard. So, who purchased it, he says, you know, doesn't, did it, it's been four or five months, and they haven't done anything with it, and generally, we do six months to a year lease, and, I mean, he explained everything to the fullest extent to me, and, and that's when I said, "Well, you know, the, the city is..." At first, I just went in there saying my name was Jeff, see what kind of info I get, and I kept getting shot down and everything. Then I said, "Well, I'm going to come clean with you, I'm the mayor for the city of Iscany," and then it was a different song and dance, so, um, hopefully he contacts me, and then I can push it on you and Keith, and you guys can run with it.
Yeah, thank you for making contact.
I did reach out to that gentleman, and I'm waiting for a callback.
For the sidewalk?
Yeah. So, I, I think I did my two homework things I said I was going to do. Can I get an A, please? Anything else? Good? Let's move on to business items. K one, amending chapter two six-two sewer and water service charges. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As was discussed at the committee of the whole meetings on December twenty-first, as well as January eighteenth of this year, it was discussed to remove the water and sewer half base charges that were applied to properties within the city that were not connected to water and/or sewer, but had availability. The consensus of that and recommendation of the committee was to remove those, as it was not a substantial amount within our budget of revenue that we received, and from, as staff could tell, was implemented somewhere around nineteen eighty-two, and there was not a concrete reason as to why those were implemented, and, um, I believe the committee believed that we could recover costs for maintenance and upkeep of our infrastructure by having our Sack and Whack charges paid for once they did connect.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. K two, amending chapter eight, city council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the December twenty-first committee of the whole meeting, it was discussed that it was not necessary to have our other board minutes approved by city council, this would include the E D A, Park Rec and Culture Board, as well as Planning Commission, the city attorney says that those own boards should be approving their own minutes, and it's not necessary to go to city council. There was one sentence within chapter eight of city code that had stated that council would approve those, so those are being removed with this amendment to that chapter.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's why we need you to explain things, because at first I was like, "What the heck is that?" Then you explained it, and I'm like, "Oh, yeah."
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Did I have that right, or was that backwards? Did you motion it and you seconded, or was, did I do that right?
He, he motioned.
All right, good. Hopefully I was paying attention. All right, let's get on to the long one. K three, the South Brookview Improvements Preliminary Engineering Report.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion approved, let's move on.
I keep, I keep making them shorter, so...
You do?
You're so full of it, your eyes should be brown.
Should be shorter.
Wait, are they?
I don't know, might be going there, no. All right, so, this is our preliminary engineering report for the South Brookview improvements that you guys authorized us looking into back in summer. We now completed the report, you should have a copy of it. Uh, just do a quick little buzz through to summarize it for the, for you and to do more questions, so. So, the project area is about twelve blocks, um, it's South Brookview Lane, Marion Street, Nineth Street, Eighth Street, and Eighth Avenue, between Whiskey and Sixth Avenue. It's, uh, it's been in our capital improvement plan for quite some time, and we've, uh, more or less finally gotten around to knocking it out. So, with that said, the pavement ratings are between two and five, and the two is pretty much in a completely failed state, where, you know, that's one stage away from almost calling it the, almost a gravel at the surface, and a five is already now beyond what we could ever think about just doing a milliner layout, and so, they're rated out of ten, so, get the, the general idea there, but essentially, the, the pavement condition was found to be well beyond, you know, the, doing the standard maintenance, so. Um, the water main and sanitary were, the water main, some of it was the original install with the city in nineteen seventy-six, uh, with some of the other development areas being done in nineteen ninety. Sanitary sewer in South Brookview is actually a large eighteen-inch R C P pipe that was installed in nineteen eighty-three, and then that other development area was again in nineteen ninety. We haven't found any issues, failures, breaks in those pipes, and expect those to build the life, uh, last the life of the improvement that we'd be proposing here, so we don't really anticipate needing to do anything with those. And then, the storm sewer is functioning adequately, so we don't anticipate needing to add any. Um, and then the other thing that has been done was the Inoka Conservation District had done a study on where water quality projects could be completed in the city. Uh, we've done some of those, if you think back to the pond that we did at Almino and Whiskey, that was a specifically identified spot to pick off storm water before it made into the river to help with water quality. Um, in our area, they've identified some, uh, possible rain gardens to add, if, like, a resident should be up for having like a curb cut that would have the water dump into like a small little pocket to, to let some water infiltrate instead of go straight into the storm system. But, that's just something that we've identified at this point, and if we move into that final design, we can talk at open houses and at public hearings on whether or not it's going to be interested in, in having that done, it would be a requirement by any means.
So, this could essentially be done, just like Main Street, you're just tearing up the old and replacing with new, you don't have to replace anything.
Right, actually, this would be even less involved than Main Street, in that the curb condition is fantastic, actually, in this area, the pavement is failed, and the curb's pretty darn good. And so, in Main Street, we ripped all the curb out because all of the lift had just crumbled away, we redid all the walk because that had cracked up and failed. In this case, well, there's no walk, uh, and the curb is ninety percent fine, we'll only have to go do little spot repairs on the curb, and then otherwise, it'd be, the pavement would be the same thing we'd do on Main Street, reclaim it, shape it, pave it. So, it'd be much quicker and cheaper. Uh, so with that said, there's your improvements.
I like the word "cheaper."
Yeah, reclaim, uh, and pave, and just patch where needed. Uh, we are looking at, uh, completing the sidewalk loop along South Brookview, there's currently that dead-end stub over by Whiskey, and, uh, and then the, the walk along, um, I'm sorry, the walk along Whiskey, and then the stub that stubs east west from Sixth Avenue, um, that we'd be able to connect together, I have a little figure on the next slide here, but, uh, then as I mentioned, the utilities are found to be perfectly fine at the moment. So, here's the, the concept layout right now, um, using the more city standard boulevard and sidewalk width, a five-foot wide sidewalk, uh, we actually narrowed up the boulevard just a foot to five-foot boulevard, but that does take out, um, you know, ten, eleven trees, three of which are fairly large. Um, so this is that first concept stage, uh, we'd, we'd kind of think we'd talk at the open house if we have one, or a public hearing, or at least directly with these residents, um, their take on these trees. Uh, we might be able to kind of manipulate the trail of boulevard, you know, out or back, or kind of trying to dodge trees, but the problem with a lot of these that have like a wide canopy are that you got to clear the tree ten feet up from the walk, wherever it goes, and so, you'd kind of be getting into hacking a lot of some of the smaller trees just completely off, even if you dodge it a little bit, and then the larger trees, um, if they're growing kind of out, you just have to deal with how many limbs you'd be taking out even if you dodge them, so. So, this first pass is following city standard and taking out the trees that are in the way, out in the right way, um, but completely open for discussion for whatever wig and room we'll have for lighting, um, should we, you know, need to.
Jason, on those trees, could they be, have like a tree spade to pick them up, move them, maybe extend them on the other side of the sidewalk a little bit to those people?
So, thinking of the trees that are out there, uh, actually, and I, I'm going to smoke, actually, if you look at this detail, I was just counting off the X's, and there's actually only two sets of three that are really trees, um, the, the ones that are middle, mid-block there are actually fairly large, um, trees, but they're kind of the type that have one trunk that's split into like five separate, you know, kind of eight-inch trees or so, and then maybe the next one's kind of got a lean to it. So, those won't be ones we could tree spade. Um, the three that are on the west end there, down by Whiskey, um, they're closer down on the line of being small enough to spade without being kind of out of control, but they're also kind of, you know, not these like pristine, freshly planted trees, so...
Does it cost you more to replace or spade?
Uh, well, it depends on the size of the tree, where you're moving it, and how many you're doing. In our case, if we're only talking about doing one to three, um, it would cost more to spade, just in that cutting down a tree doesn't cost much, paying for like a, you know, eight or ten footer, I'm sorry, I figured it out, but, you know, the standard ten, twelve foot tree, you know, a couple of inch diameter, and getting it planted would be, uh, overly expensive, but...
On the sidewalk, my, my thought on that was that, you know, there's only like fifteen houses down on that side, and the only people that are really using South Brookview, from what I can tell, because I kind of live, you know, right on that corner that's just beyond where we're doing this, but if you go down Sixth Avenue, everybody that's going down that way or coming up that way is taking a, a right or, you know, to go toward Fifth Avenue, to go out past Madison Park and stuff out, you know, so, the only people that are really using that section of that road are the fifteen houses that probably live on that area, you know, I can't see there being a lot of like through traffic through there, you know, so, I don't know that we should spend the money on a sidewalk that, you know, where the, the sidewalk is where it needs to be, because the traffic is to the right of this picture, you know what I mean? You guys know where I'm talking about, where it's kind of that stop sign that really shouldn't be a stop sign, that's like a...
But then, what if it, what if it goes in our favor that we do end up doing that sidewalk in Whiskey? And maybe this would be less used, but then maybe it would be more used, I mean, it's kind of, as, as Councilman Lundin would say, that's a double-edged sword, I think that's his favorite saying, that, and if you build it, they'll come.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's if you build it, they'll come.
I mean, that, that's the only thought that I have, is, I mean, we, ultimately, we want that for resident safety.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem like on Whiskey, I mean, or like what, how we did on Five out here, I mean, that's all, that makes good sense to, to try to get those done, but, uh, which we have, you know, but something like this, I just, there's just not that much traffic there, I mean, it...
I get your question, Jeff, but would it actually, you think the traffic would actually increase if we clea- increase that along Whiskey, right on South Brook?
Well, I think if we did the one on Whiskey, I think it would increase more that they, they might walk more down that way, but when they filter into these neighborhoods, then I'm worried that we're taking out something that they use, I don't know.
There is no sidewalk there.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
You just proposed you just put one in, right?
Right, yeah, if you look on the figure, you can see on the, the right side of the figure, um, there's a stub of sidewalk that just extends on three houses past Fifth Off, from that kind of development right there, and so, it'd just be finishing that run over, um, I think the two traffic-related topics or pedestrian-related would be, you know, all the residents to the south and the east that would be going into like the elementary school that don't have that segment of, of Whiskey, would be coming up to South Brookview, and because of the, the cricks there, you know, they're pretty much walking the street to get up if they're not already going over to Whiskey and walking that boulevard that Councilman Collison has been mentioning, so.
And I might...
It's kind of the flow of direction with the prick in the way, and the fact that there isn't another road across, you know, it really is about five blocks, I guess if we're going from Whiskey to Fifth, um, before the road act, there's a road that crosses the creek.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but there is sidewalk already there that just needs to be connected.
Nope, well, there's sidewalk on either end, there's no sidewalk through here right now.
Right, there's, but there's sidewalk past Sixth Avenue and, and South Brookview.
Correct, yeah.
There's like three houses in, so ultimately, we would be connecting.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I don't think it's, I don't know, I just, you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you only have fifteen houses there that are probably really going to use that, you know, and, or fifteen houses worth of traffic, you know what I'm saying, I just...
I think there's only seven houses, well...
Well, on the one side, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
There's eight on the other side, yeah.
Right, so you're right. I see what you're saying, and I'm not saying...
Well, you got to wonder if we're talking, if we're concerned about students walking over to the middle school, it, it'd filter in from other neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe, is there a way of asking people, like, maybe sending out a survey, "Do you want a sidewalk in here," or is that just not feasible? Maybe that would be the open house.
I think it would cost more money to do the survey than it would be to put sidewalk in.
No, I, I doubt that one.
Well, I mean, we could certainly, if we're going to go to an open house or, or...
We could ask.
We can certainly ask anybody involved in this project, you know, the, the project area, we'd be getting the open house notice, so everybody on these streets, you know, we'd certainly be able to get asked, um, you know, in the notice that goes out to it, we could add a little questionnaire.
And I think those open houses, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've done two, and I think they were very helpful, and ultimately, they end up filtering out questions coming before this council, because Jason and I, I've attended both, and Jason was very informal, and I...
We don't have to decide on this tonight anyway, right? We're just saying, we want to go forward with the whole project, but we can decide on that part of it later, right? Or we have to make that decision today, or...
Right, I mean, you can take it all the way to, we designed it, we bid it as an alternate, and then we decide to not do it.
Okay.
And we can take it as far as we want.
Okay.
Well, I think here's the question, I mean, I, I get inviting these people to that open house.
And then ask them there if they want it.
Yeah, I don't know, saying don't ask them, but I'm also wondering how many people outside those neighborhoods are going to come use that, just because there's a sidewalk in your neighborhood, doesn't mean other people don't use that sidewalk, I see all kinds of people using a sidewalk outside their neighborhood that, I would think...
This is a guy riding his bike around the town, so he's going to know.
Jimmy, you, you know where I live. You wouldn't think there'd be a lot of traffic in there?
There's a ton.
And I'm going to tell you what, there's a lot of people, I watch them walk by, I sit on my, in the summertime, I sit all on my front porch and...
Well, your house, I could see that, because you, because you've got all of Rum River Drive is over there, so if they come here...
But it's also, it's also the end of the town. They could, they, they don't have to walk all the way to that last, that's basically the last street of the town, they don't have to walk that.
You were just saying foot traffic wise.
Yeah, foot traffic wise. I mean, I, I mean, that's, and, and I do see people fly through there more times than you can shake a stick at. I watch cars that go flying through there, I, you know, I would swear, and, and Travis can tell you the same thing, you could sit, look at somebody and think that they're going faster than twenty or thirty miles an hour, I'd swear they're going faster than that, but they may not be, but in a residential area, they're going plenty fast. You know, and you got somebody out walking, you know, there, there's older people, there's people that live three blocks north of me that come actually walking by my place.
And it's, I mean, I live on Main Street, it's the most busiest street, I think, in this town in my mind, but we walk the kids quite a bit around, and it's amazing how much foot traffic this city has, period. You know, in the spring, in the summer, there, and nobody wants to walk in the winter, I mean.
There's plenty, I'll tell you, I swear, there's a lot of fit people here. I mean, seriously.
Well, I'm not saying that the sidewalks are a bad thing, I'm not opposed to sidewalks, I'm just questioning whether we need it in a spot where...
I see what he's saying.
I, I know what you're saying.
There's not a lot of car traffic, then can't they just use the road, is all I'm saying, you know?
Right, and I, and I totally see and get what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying.
But I'd hate to say, "Let's not do it," until, I mean, I would go to that open house and ask them.
Saying we got to decide tonight, I just, I just was wondering about that, is all.
I think it'd be a good idea to go to that open house and ask.
Yeah.
You know, if, you know, they feel like they don't need it, then I think they answer the question for us.
They're ultimately the ones who're paying the majority of it.
No, they don't get assessed for sidewalks, so it's...
And not, not newly installed, that won't petition for us, and this would not be assessed.
So, we're fronting the bill on that, period?
And then how much is a sidewalk? I mean, how much is that going to be?
Uh, the estimate right now is a hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, Jimmy was spot on.
Um, there's a, you know...
Well, I read the stuff.
You read it?
I read it, yeah.
Uh, no, so, you know, because of the trees, because of the driveway...
Jimmy Gordon, he pays attention to numbers.
You know, and that's where, you know, the estimate might be a little on the high side, we didn't want to go in, you know, underestimating what we could be getting into, but, um, you know, that's where it would come down to, whatever that bid comes underestimating what we could be getting into, but, um, you know, that's where it would come down to whatever that bid comes in at, you know? But we do have about three more opportunities to decide whether or not we're gonna do it or not. So, you know, at this point, if it's, let's ask the residents at the open house, then we would have to have a public hearing on the project. And if we're getting a lot of pushback or you guys are determined you don't want to do it at that time, we could pull it. Or we finish the plans, make it an alternate, get the numbers and decide if you don't want to do it.
I'd like meeting residents, Jimmy. I'll go knock door to door for you and ask.
You laugh, I'll do it. I believe you.
Yeah.
I'd ask.
So here's the question.
If I lived there, I'm not saying I wouldn't be opposed to a sidewalk. I mean, it would be nice to have, but I mean, it's.
I'm not gonna tell them who's paying the bill. I just wanted to ask the question, do you want a sidewalk?
Ultimately, they, even though you say we're flipping the bill ultimately and and they're paying for it.
Yeah, right, they're paying their portion.
So.
I'm still not gonna say that. I'm just gonna ask them if they want a sidewalk or not, but I I'm not beyond doing it. But we, I think the open house has been very informal the first two times we had them. I'd love to have another one. I'd go to that one. Jason, you'll, you have to be there, sorry.
You're welcome. All right, that's fine.
But, uh, yeah, I don't know. I'd be curious to see what they thought.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, the remainder of the twelve blocks, um, you know, don't have any sidewalk and you wouldn't be putting any in, you know, just in that respect of how many people, you know, in the area before there's a walk. But, yeah, it's all, that's why we're making the slide. Um, the only other thing, I guess, if we're ready to move on from that is.
Well, I just have one more question because you mentioned that. The other streets don't have it. The only reason we're completing this one is because it's one, someone both ends. That's why you proposed that, right?
Yeah, and and, yeah, and then that topic that it's, you know, been multiple blocks since the last sidewalk connection over to Whiskey, you know, and to finish the kind of the grid of of interconnected pedestrian system. So, yep.
Moving on, Jason.
All right. Um, so I guess another thing is there's a, you know, just in this figure is Eighth Ave, if you see on the bottom of the image, there's a stop sign picture there. Right now, there's yield signs there. Um, in the past, I believe the direction the council's been to get rid of yield signs, switching to stop signs, but I just wanted to make sure that's the direction we want to go. Or where's, where are they?
Chief, any benefit for you to answer that question?
Not, not.
I feel like there's a stop sign every corner in the city.
Especially over there at that Sixth Avenue, you know.
I think you just stop because you think there's one there regardless.
I think I just, at the end of page two, there's a yield sign, and I think I was just there the other day and I stopped. So used to stopping, yeah.
Yeah, you just stop everywhere in the city.
I stop at the sports shop on Main Street.
I think that's your choice.
No, I just do. I always think there's a stop sign there.
But I think a yield sign's fine. I don't, especially on that, yeah.
I guess the part of our like sign replacement program is we're replacing all the signs either way. It's just whether or not we're putting back any yield sign versus a stop sign. It wouldn't stay there.
Right.
So it's not a cost savings thing. It's just a, do we want a system standard, uh, you know, going forward and clean those up? I know Matt Sylvester doing the sign replacement program is gonna have the same question for just as he passes through the whole city, as he's replacing signs or we're switching them out or just, you know, replacing them as is, so.
I feel like, I mean, even going down, I'm with Steve on Main Street, right where they just put the new Serenity Counseling. I stopped there and I don't, there's no stop.
Is there no stop sign?
There's not even a yield sign.
There's not even a yield sign, but I stopped.
Why are you stopping there?
I just.
I'm just used to stopping.
Just used to stopping at intersections.
Yeah. Even my wife is like, what are you doing? I'm like, I don't know.
You've ridden, I've ridden with Steve too much.
Well, then we'd get there in two days if I rode with Steve.
Oh, don't even start.
Same day.
Do I want to decide right now then?
No, let's, let's.
Jason, is there not a crosswalk across there?
There is not.
Across?
Across the Ethan, Ethan Brookview?
No.
One thing that I know we have had close to that area, I can't actually recall off the top of my head which intersection, but we have had requests somewhere in there, that area where there is a crosswalk and there have been yields that some residents have requested that it become a stop sign. So I think that's why.
That is Ethan Brookview.
Some of those have converted over to stop signs because of resident requests in the past. I mean, that's food for thought, but I think that it is a good idea when there's a crosswalk to put a stop sign versus a yield if there was one.
I think that is a high traffic area. It's higher than you'd make. One of my best friends lives over there. It's always traffic.
Jimmy lives right over there. He's through that area every day.
On on South Brookview, you think?
Yeah.
Really?
Especially coming off of, what is that, six from the, from the neighborhood?
Oh, yeah, come.
Yeah, but even.
Well, I know where you're talking about. I know where your friend lives and I and I'm not disagreeing with you there. There is a sidewalk in front of that house. Because I've seen you out there. So I know where you're talking about and you're right, on that section of it, there is, but not on this section.
Right, but it's like a connection.
Yeah, but, but everybody coming down six, what direction do they go?
Right.
Like, yeah, right. Or if you're coming up six, they go, you know, past that same spot. So I'm not disagreeing with you on that portion of it. You're right, there is a lot of traffic. But I'm just talking about just this section where it's past where your friend's house is. That is, I don't think there probably is much traffic there, but I don't know.
Yeah, I would say because there's no sidewalks through this development, there aren't any crosswalks and I wouldn't recommend putting them in because they wouldn't be connecting anything to anything, so.
Interesting if there's no sidewalk.
Right, the only crosswalks we're showing are that west end across, you know, like sidewalk along Whiskey's already crossing, so. Um, anyway, wrapping this bad boy up. Um, so with the sidewalk, the total project cost with fees, engineering, uh, testing is seven hundred and forty four thousand. Um, twenty-five of the street costs, uh, that are assessable things, uh, comes out to a hundred and forty eight thousand of assessable money and four hundred and forty four thousand of city cost. And then that concrete sidewalk topic is in that hundred and fifty thousand dollar boulevard of additional city costs if we choose to move forward.
How many residents is this affecting?
Eighty.
That's a big question.
Eighty? He read the report. He's got a map.
My, 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 uh, in-laws live on this area, so. I know exactly what they're getting assessed to, so.
I just looked, actually, what's funny is before I came here, I looked at not only his in-laws, but I looked at common friends of ours.
Oh, yeah.
But I looked at it all too, so I, he's just faster than I am to kick it out, but.
There you go.
But, yeah, I looked at the same thing, Jimmy, on both people.
So with that said though, the big thing everybody cares about is their assessment amounts and generally how it compares to other projects. It's a, it's gonna be significantly lower per front foot for the residents on this for their assessment versus the last two projects we've done. Uh, Main Street came out to fifty-two dollars a front foot compared to this eighteen forty-one. Uh, Main Street, as we already talked, had all the walk removed and walk was accessible there because it's a reconstruct of it. Had all the curb removed and like I said, we're only doing like ten percent of the curb. And that street width, while, um, we did give that credit for it being extremely wide, was still wider than these streets. So all that came together to be, you know, three times as expensive, uh, to a front foot of a assessable amount. Uh, Sixth Ave, which is just right adjacent to this project, was done, uh, four years ago, I believe, but, uh, that was about double and that was mostly because there was a lot more curb that had to be done on that one because there's more sections going back. And, uh, strangely had a significantly less assessable front foot amount toll to share between everybody because it has a bunch of intersections and because it's a bunch of side yards. So that project had less footage to distribute it to everybody. And so this project this year is actually the ideal narrowest road, least amount of curb work and a lot of people to share. So comes out, you know, quite a bit better, uh, at lower cost than the the last few on the assessment side. Uh, with that average coming out to eighteen twenty-five. Uh, obviously, this is an estimate. Once we get bids, the final assessment that we'd actually end up running on November would be based on actual big dollar ones and actual costs spent. So I just bolded that topic of that the sidewalk wouldn't be assessed. So, uh, for the project schedule, uh, it sounds like we're interested in doing that open house. I just tentatively scheduled that for, uh, February sixteen. That's the Wednesday in a couple of weeks. Um, and then a public hearing, the requiring type for the assessment process. And then approving the project to be able to move on to advertising for bids, uh, would be scheduled to happen on March first. Um, we'd advertise for a few weeks, get bids in, and if they're acceptable, we'd be able to award it April fifth. And then the project would be able to occur this summer, be completed by fall, and, uh, we'd be able to hold that final assessment in November like we have for the last few projects.
I like all of the above. All your dates even.
All right. Any other questions?
But I think at that open house, we should ask about sidewalk, stop sign or yield.
Crosswalks.
Well, the crosswalk, though, he's saying you put that in, there's nothing to connect that to. So why put it in? He would recommend we not anyway. There's no, what do you call those things?
Oh, I guess it was, I guess it was the stop.
Ped ram.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's no ped ram, I think.
Maybe I was thinking of the stop sign. They want that stop sign, right?
Yeah, the stop sign or the yield.
By the crosswalk, not do we put one in or not?
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I guess there's two resolutions. One's just receiving this report and calling for that public hearing following the assessment process.
We can just do that in one lump sum, can we not?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to point out what the two things are. And then the other one is to actually authorize preparing the plans to get it moving, to be able to get it ready for bids this spring. Um, that's about it.
Any other questions, Jimmy?
Who he has a, no, he was motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the feasibility report and the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to re, uh, approve both A and B, we might as well say.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thanks for the good work as always, Mr. Cook. Anything from the consent agenda that we need to discuss?
I kind of like Jimmy's thoughts on this hiring process.
Yeah, I don't know. Can we take any action on that today or we'd have to wait till? If we wanted to, you're saying about letting the liquor store folks just hire the people and, yeah, I mean, having that delay is.
I think it'd be a good idea to have the manager and Ms. Cook.
Ms. Wood.
Ms. Wood, I'm sorry. I still got Jason on my mind for some reason and I'm not even looking at the guy. Um, Ms. Wood, sorry. So I, I think it would be a great idea to have the manager and you just use your discrepancy on hiring. I don't, I think we're wasting time on that and we could lose that individual by then.
And we have seen it with, which, the higher positions that we have are part-time positions that turnover, um, we've seen it with like seasonal too. It comes, becomes very competitive. So if if you'd be, you know, interested in giving that authority for all part-time or seasonal intern type staff, which are all part-time, all under that category, um, you, council would ultimately approve it, but if you gave authority for staff to be able to hire them, get, make the offer, which we typically start them at that step, which is step one for all those types of positions. Um, and then, well, sometimes it's depending on experience, but, and it still would come back to council ultimately.
But that would, they would start.
We can get them in the door.
Yep. I, do we, can we make a motion on that?
We can make a motion.
I make a motion that we allow the manager, and I'm gonna put public works director or department heads and Ms. Wood for seasonal and part-time employment. That way that, you know, they can, he can look at them, Matt Sylvester can say, hey, Josie, you know, let's meet with this guy. He's a part, he's part-time summer help. It just saves a lot of, it gets them in the door.
I think it'd be a great idea to have a department head with Ms. Wood in there.
The department head does make, make the recommendation to myself and human resources. So ultimately, it'd be permitting human resources and city administrator to make an offer and allow for employment to begin prior to council approval of those part-time positions.
I'll second that.
Motion from Councilman Lundin to allow, uh, department head or you said they would have to go HR.
And Ms. Wood, yeah.
And Ms. Wood to authorize seasonal and part-time hiring. And a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. The only one, I had a question and I'm gonna assume this is for the police chief, metropolitan emergency. What is that, chief?
That just authorizes us to be in an agreement for grant, to pass through grant from state agency for Narcan for opioid overdose treatment.
I don't know why we wouldn't want that. So, nice to see that.
It'd be the training will pay for and then the equipment itself will be reimbursed, so there shouldn't be any cost to the city.
You ever seen that stuff work?
It's amazing.
It's phenomenal.
It's crazy.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, motion to approve consent agenda with L seven.
Yes.
By by Councilman Lundin and second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That is all.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Therefore, we stand adjourned. Another constructive meeting by the city council. Good job, fellas.